Okay, I would like to open the April 7th, 2015 Board of Aldermen meeting from Warrington, Missouri. We'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask Alderman Castorly to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting from March 17th, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Castorly, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the minutes. Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. This time, we would entertain a hearing from the public. If there's anybody from the public that has anything they would like to address the board about, we just ask that you keep your time to five minutes. Otherwise, we request that you get on their future agenda. Anybody from the public? Seeing nobody, I would now ask for any comments from the Board of Aldermen.
I'd just like to mention, on April 1st, I went with the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council with 16 people and met with our Buzura Senators and Representatives. Basically, you give them the message that we are not in favor of toll roads. And also, they had a list of alternative ways of paying for repairs and stuff on Interstate 70, but the main focus was no toll roads. With that in mind, I would encourage, if you're not in favor of toll roads, to contact your representatives, Glenn Klockmeyer, who is like a chairman of the transportation part, Bart Corman, representative. He's Vice Chair of the Joint Transportation Oversight. And also Senator Mike Keogh, all with the transportation end of it. For the next five weeks, they're going to be hearing and talking about this sort of stuff. And if you can contact them and send messages to them how you feel, now's the time to do it.
Okay, very good. I know I could not make the meeting or the visitation at the Capitol, but I know it was very important, and I was glad to see somebody other than just--
It was my first trip, something like that, and it was very interesting.
It is. It's always good. And I was glad somebody other than just EDC members that went. And also, to your list, I would add, and I think she has already expressed, I've met a couple times with Senator Gene Riem, and she is definitely on board opposing the toll road. But again, she is one of those, she wants to see some alternative revenue generating options, so--
Yes. Well, those are the ones that I got to see. If you go in and anybody with the Joint Transportation Oversight Committee is really some of the key people to see.
Okay. Any other comments?
I do. I have a couple things. The first thing I wanted to address, and thank Jessica. I attended the Easter egg hunt. John was there as well, and it was very well-run, very nice in Binkley Woods. It was a really nice event. We had some officers there helping, and I apologize, Chief, I can't remember the two gentlemen's names that were there, but I think it was very well-run and organized. So, thank you to Jessica. The other thing I wanted to point out, and that's probably why nobody else is here, is they're probably all at the courthouse looking at the election. You know, we have elections that'll come out tonight, and I wanted to make the comment that I was very impressed with the number of candidates that were willing to put their name on the ballot. We had a lot of candidates running, so whatever their personal reasons for doing so, I think it's good for our community to have choices. And so, I wanted to thank everybody who did put their name on the ballot. Whoever wins, good luck. We'll find out tonight.
Karen, if I could, add one more to your report with the Easter egg hunt. The Explorer Group was also there, and they were very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board members? Okay, one of the items I would like to comment on was, you know, the way we had a situation with a gas leak, a major gas leak in town. And if you read up on all the background of it, again, it was not the city of Warrington's fault, so to speak. It was an honest mistake. However, I would like to compliment our city employees that, first off, I can't remember the gentleman's name now, but as soon as he knew it happened, he contacted the proper authorities and our emergency management team, which is our city fire department, city police, highway patrol, emergency management system people. I think they did a wonderful job. They worked together to minimize the problem and got it handled in what I thought was a very, very short amount of time. So, again, on behalf of the city, the citizens, the Aldermen, myself, I would like to commend the city workers, the city police. Greg, your guys did a great job. Mike Owenby and the police department, I heard they kind of coordinated a lot of it. And so, again, it's one of those things, you don't like to see an emergency like that. But when it happens, when you see how well they perform, it kind of puts you at ease that maybe, you know, if something does happen down the road, we've got the personnel that can handle it.
That was Jeff, wasn't it?
I thought it was a very, very, very good job.
Jeff Nelson was the one who instigated the proper procedures.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. Next on the agenda is approval to hire Brenda Klingler as a full-time animal control officer at $12 per hour with a start date of March 23rd, 2015. And Greg, would you like to introduce her?
How about a motion? I'll make the motion to approve the hire of Brenda Klingler.
Approve hiring first, I'm sorry. I'm just hoping--
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Schluter to approve the hiring of Brenda Klingler as full-time animal control officer at $12 per hour with a start date of March 23rd, Roll call vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Now, Chief, would you like to--
I sure would. Brenda, if you'd stand up. It's my pleasure, Mayor and board, to introduce you all to our new full-time ACO, Brenda Klingler.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Brenda. Be safe. No dog bites.
Yeah. Good luck with all the--
Show her a picture--
She comes to us with a lot of experience.
Yeah, if you see this dog, he's mine. Bring him back home.
I don't know if anybody caught that comment from Chief, but he said she brings a lot of experience to the job, so that's always good. Next on the agenda is to approve placing of blue and gold ribbons on light poles for National Crime Victims Rights Week, and that's from April 19th to 25th. Toni Trudkin?
Trudkin.
Trudkin, I'm sorry, thank you. Would you like to get up and address this? Toni, for anything? I know you sent us a nice letter about it and everything like that, and this is something we have to have board approval with.
Okay.
So, if you want to explain to them a little bit more what's going on.
Sure. I'm Toni Trudkin, and I work as a victims advocate in the prosecuting attorney's office. And I've been working in that capacity for about three and a half years in the office. And every year, we celebrate National Crime Victims Rights Week with a balloon release held in front of the courthouse building. This year's theme is engaging communities and empowering victims. And although I'm not a seasoned public speaker, I am very passionate about helping to empower the victims of crime in the city, as well as all of our municipalities and in this county. I feel like, in the past, we haven't really reached out to our community. I feel like our businesses haven't really engaged in being aware of the crime in the city and how we can help one another, and that there are services and there are resources available in our cities and countywide as well. I feel like if we could put banners up on the light posts through the city, it would raise some awareness. People would ask questions. What are the banners for? What's going on? I've already contacted the newspaper. There will be an article in the paper explaining a little bit about Crime Victims Rights Week, explaining about the colors and what our mission is with trying to engage our community, as well as, I want to get some flyers around different businesses so that they are aware of what's going on that week as well. I feel like if we can get some knowledge out to people when they are unfortunately a victim of crime, that they are aware that there are resources available for them, and that our city is there to help provide that information, our county is there to provide that information, and that we all work together, and our goal is to empower them. I would like to see us be very proactive in fighting crime rather than reactive as much as possible. And I've just seen, when we've had the banners, the ribbons tied around the post in town, people are saying, what's that for? What's going on? What is this all about? So, to me, that would just be a wonderful way to get things started. I'm on a very limited budget, so hopefully, this will be successful, and we can get into Wright City and Truesdale and Forest Dell and really have some good outreach for the whole county. I'm sorry.
Now, as I understand it, you will supply the banners, and it's just our city employees will put them on the--
Yes.
--post? Is that the idea, Toni, or do you--
I'll provide the rhythm, but--
It would be Brad's crew if we're going to have the city crew do it. Sometimes, the individuals do it. There have been times that the city crew has done it. So, it would be whatever is your choice.
Well, I think it's more of what's Brad's choice, because I think, didn't Brad prefer to do it--
No, he does have a listing of what the requirements are--
Oh, okay.
--of what has to be used to do it, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Karen, I believe you're right on the last time someone came through, I forget what they wore, the last ribbons. But they made the ribbons and everything up, what Brad's crew put it up, because he preferred, because the way it's done and the tape and the kind of tape and stuff, he's really particular about his light poles. He wants to keep--
I don't blame him.
They're very expensive, the paint, and he likes to keep it on there.
Right, and I don't want to cause any damage or anything like that.
Well, let's leave that to Brad to discuss. You guys can have that discussion, and Brad can, and you can decide what.
Okay.
But just know that I think we need to have that discussion, just to make sure Brad's opinion is one way or the other. So, I'd make the motion that we approve to place the blue and gold ribbon on the light poles for National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 19th through the 25th.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Alderman Castorly, seconded by Alderman Schluter to approve the placement of ribbons on the light poles for National Crime Victims Rights Week of April 19th to the 25th. Roll call vote?
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Toni. Next item on the agenda, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, your report.
My first thing I have for you this evening is just an update on where we're at with the comprehensive plan. In your Dropbox, you have some of the materials from these latest round of meetings, one identifying brand identity that the PAC members have kind of come up with, a slogan and a logo to be used moving forward, to be associated with the comprehensive plan. You also had a summary of the meeting notes provided by Lisa from Verio related to the meetings with stakeholder groups. I believe she had two more meetings that she was holding this week, so there will be some minor additions to that, but just to give you some idea. And really, for the public and you as well, we've established a link, if you will, a new address, web address, which is warringtonplan.org. If you put that into your browser, it will take you directly on our webpage to the part of the webpages that talk specifically about the comprehensive plan, so it's kind of a direct link to get you there. We are posting all of the materials as those are being provided, so everything related to all of those meetings is available out there for the public to view at their leisure. So, encourage everyone to take a look at what is out there at this point and the future updates that will be provided there. The next meetings will be held on the next two days, so Wednesday and Thursday of this week. These are the prospective group meetings that consist of, I believe, there's either eight or nine small group meetings of members between six and 10, member groups like senior citizens groups, local retail businesses, emergency services. So, it's small groups of people from like backgrounds in the community to bring those ideas together and provide those to Lisa. So, those are upcoming, and then the next PAC meeting is scheduled for April 28th. So, the meetings are moving forward quickly. That's the start of the process to get all the thoughts and ideas together. So, that's moving quickly and going very well, from what I understand.
Terry, do you have a time on that meeting on the 28th?
I do not, but I can get that to you, Toni.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
PAC member says it's six o'clock. Thank you. All right. The other thing I have for you this evening, under operational updates, is something that kind of came in last minute, and I believe you have a copy of change order one at your desk this evening. This is a change order from McGuire Iron, who is the company doing the work on the water tower over on Ashland, that the big curtain's over, and it looks like some big mysterious thing underneath there. We've had lots of questions about what's going on there. Guy, do you want to talk about this?
There is a ladder inside that's not functionable, and there's, on the top of it, at one time, there was a heater, and the pipe work that comes on top of it needs to be sealed up, and the ladder needs to be removed. Before they go and actually paint the tower, that needs to be cut out and then reprimed and fixed where the other material is to seal that up. So, that needs to be done before we actually paint the outside of the tower.
So, this change order is a total of $3,000, which would bring the new contract price to $493,000.
I'm making a motion to approve the change order from McGuire Iron for $3,000.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the change order on the water tank painting. Roll call vote?
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
And then the only other thing I have for you is just an update on the sewer project. On Friday, Guy and I will be meeting with the engineers and receiving the 90 percent report for the engineering for that project. So, we are not too far away at this point from actually starting to award some bids for that project and move forward. We'll get updated, construction costs, some further ideas on where we think everything's going to land with that, and a more updated actual period of time when we might actually see some of those things out for bid.
Okay. Any other questions for Terry?
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Guy Jever's Public Works Director. We're going to spend some money tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and board. First item I have is approval for Hickory Lick-Karen Brock instructions. It came in as low bid for $1,019,59.67. And I have Cochran Engineer here with us if you have any questions.
Any questions for Guy or the engineer on this project? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve or to award the Hickory Lick Road Improvement Project to Karen Brock Construction in the maximum amount of $1,019,59.67, they being the low bidder on the project.
Mayor, that motion needs to be very specific because of the requirement for MoDOT to concur with that. So, I gave you some language in your notes. Needs to say to award, to accept the Karen Brock low bid, maximum amount of, subject to concurrence, an award by MoDOT prior to signature of the contract.
Okay.
So move.
What was that, Guy?
So move. In other words, what Terry said.
Do you have that? You have that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't. I missed that. Okay. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion to award the Hickory Lick Road Improvement Project to Karen Brock Construction in the maximum amount of $1,019,959.67 as low bid, subject to concurrence, and award by MoDOT prior to signature of the contract. Can I repeat?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer to award the Hickory Lick Improvement Project to Karen Brock Construction. Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one.
Let's let Gary do it.
Well, I'm not voting against the Karen Brock bid. I'm voting against the project. I have stated numerous times that I'm opposed to spending this much money for a road to go to a ball field so people can feel better about their experience of coming to Warrington and watch their kids playing ball. We have plenty of other streets that need resurfacing and improvement. You know, to me, an alternative would have been to do an overlay on the project, realizing that's not perfect, but we have many a streets in town and in the counties that are still overlaid. And I think this is a tremendous amount of money to do this project and just hit a small area of town. And I tried to talk to the prior mayor about changing the direction of this, and was not able to accomplish that, so that's the reason for my negative vote.
Just to let the board and public know on this particular project, too, a couple things to take into consideration. Number one, last year with the addition of the tournaments and everything, the activity at the athletic park, we looked at probably in the neighborhood of $2 million in additional sales to people along Highway 47, and that was, you know, generated more tax money for the city. Also, close to 600, maybe a little over $600,000 of this million dollars is grant money that we would have not otherwise probably gotten on some of the, on any other projects. So, those are a couple things to be taken into consideration, too, on this. And I know Gary thinks it's overly much for this, but I think that, again, the city is not, you know, taking, were able to use grant money that we probably wouldn't have been able to get elsewhere on some other projects.
Well, I have to disagree with the comment. We could have used the grant money on a number of structural improvement projects, wasn't specifically tied to this road. So, I think that's a little bit of a mischaracterization that it was geared specifically for this road. And who's to say we wouldn't have got too many dollars worth of revenue from projects out at the sports complex on an overlay road, too? That's, I don't see how that's critical, anybody coming or not coming to the city.
And the only comment I can make back to that is, we had an engineer that said structurally it needs to be redone.
They're always going to say that.
Well, we can also--
I don't know. I don't know. An engineer who has never looked at it--
We could argue--
--he pays over a road without curbs and gutters who hasn't said that it needs to be ground down to do it properly. So, I mean, we can disagree on it. You guys won the vote.
I agree. Well, yeah, but we can disagree, we'll agree to disagree on. But again, I didn't want to just leave the public out there with, without hearing both sides of the story, too, Greg. So, again, I respect your stand on it, as always, and we'll move forward with it. So, thank you. What you got next, Guy?
Next item I have is curb and gutter repair on Steinhagen, Pinta, Nina, and Columbus Circle. Total project budget is $3,500.
I'll entertain a motion to approve curb and gutter repair project for sections of Pinta, Nina, and Columbus Circle in the amount of $3,438.
Guy, you said Steinhagen, too.
Yes. I thought that's what you said.
Sections of--
You said Steinhagen, and we--
Then that was--
Was that a mistake?
It might have been a mistake.
Were you just trying to weasel one in there?
Curb and gutter repair, sections of Pinta, Nina, Columbus--
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the curb and gutter repair for Pinta, Nina, and the Columbus Circle for a total of $3,438.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Castorly, seconded by Alderman Hawley to approve the curb and gutter repair project for sections of Pinta, Nina, and Columbus Circle in the amount of $3,438. Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Next item I have is sidewalk replacement, sidewalk on Oak Street and North Market to Northeast on the north side of the street in the amount of $2,202.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Castorly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer? Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Gabrielle?
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month of March in the amount of $229,838.13.
I'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of, make sure I have it right, $229,838.18. And I'll call vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Guy.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Guy, I got a couple of things. Is there any way you can talk to MoDOT about their black tarping? I don't know, Terri, if you had a chance to talk to them to get that down, because there's a blind spot there coming out of Lake Toho.
I talked to Cochran yesterday, or whenever you, whoever sent the email and then called in the morning and said he'd take care of it. But did they lower, did they lower it? Looks like they lowered it.
I don't think it's really lowered, because I, I was in a truck today. Have you noticed that? Did it get lowered?
Did it look lowered or no?
I thought it looked lowered.
Okay. Well, I was in-
If it's not lowered enough, call me then. Because when I drove through it, I'm sitting in a truck.
Right. So was I this week, so, okay.
We'll drive out there tonight on his way out here and track it.
F-150 truck.
That's pretty def, that's darn good dedication.
Yeah. The other thing, Guy wanted to compliment your crew Friday for their friendly disposition driving through Ward One, cleaning out ditches. You had a lot of crew out cleaning the ditches and the, after the rain with all the leaves and stuff, so their friendly disposition around the community is well received.
Appreciate it. I'll pass that on to them.
Any other questions for Guy? I just have one, one quick one. How many water towers are we getting painted this year?
Two.
And that's 490,000?
493,000.
For each one or for both?
No, for both.
Okay.
That was your opportunity, bud. You've got to get a little quicker than that.
Okay, thank you. I'm behind it back. Michelle, you're up.
The first thing I have for you this evening is my monthly report.
Well, it should be nice on your monthly report if some of these said, some of these businesses are locating in or near Warrenton.
Actually, the first one has signed a, or has turned in a check for their first month lease with a, sorry, with an owner on Main Street, so we should have that coming very soon.
Great.
Unfortunately, at this time, I can't tell you what it is, but we do have something that'll be taking a building on Main Street.
I think we can figure it out.
Yeah, I think what I was looking at was the pending projects from the Greater Warren County Economic Council. Their projects tend to be not necessarily in Warrenton or close to.
And then the second item I have for you this evening is the bid of the billboards. And it is recommendation from Jessica and I to go with Porellet this year instead of Lamar.
Any questions or anything for Michelle on that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to award the billboard bid to Porellet in the amount of $19,000, the best bid.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderson Holly, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to award the billboard bid to Porellet in the amount of $19,000. Roll call vote?
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Gabrielle?
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month of March in the amount of $229,838.13.
I'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of, make sure I have it right, $229,838.18.
Thirteen cents.
Thirteen.
We all need our readers.
Okay.
I saw that we paid the hottie shell $15,000 instead of 45. Need my readers on.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderson Holly, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve accounts payable in the amount of $229,838.13. Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Gabrielle?
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month of March in the amount of $229,838.13. I'll entertain a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of, make sure I have it right, $229,838.18. And I'll call vote?
I don't know, a lot of playtime. I'll make a motion to approve our Local Government Week. I think it's a great idea. I think it's wonderful for all the employees in the community.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alderson Cassely, seconded by Alderman Ock, to approve the Local Government Week activities as described by Melody. I mean, sorry, Alderson Holly, I'm sorry, Terri. Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
And Mayor, the lollipops are significant because we received a comment card in our comment box out front from a young man who thought that we should have lollipops in the lobby of City Hall. So, we're responding to a request in our comment box.
Okay, well, that's good. So, we are, is this a registered voter?
I couldn't, I couldn't confirm that.
He didn't call us a bunch of suckers. I'm sorry.
Well, at least they'll know that we are taking the comment cards serious.
Absolutely.
We do pay attention to them, so keep those cards and letters coming. Okay, anything else, Melody?
Uh-uh.
Okay, Jack, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is a monthly report.
Well, it seems like your two busiest activities are trash complaints and vehicle complaints. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Pretty consistent over the next, the last four months.
And will soon be changing to weeds.
Okay.
We'd like to see some new construction.
Yeah. It's not far enough into the year yet.
It's time to get the permits.
Any questions on that? Okay, you got a-
Next item I have is a-
Bill before us?
Yeah. And it's a revision of chapter, to section 215, 030 and section 215, 130 of chapter 215 nuisances to prohibit the growth of weeds to a height over 12 inches unless it is in allowed agricultural use in the agricultural reserve zoning district. This is basically eliminating a loophole that currently exists for some single-family residents that's in a zoning, agricultural zoned area.
How many agriculture zoned areas do we have in the city that are working?
Just one.
A lot?
A lot?
Really? Really?
So, my, my question on it, because I wasn't for sure how, how to read it. In my subdivision, and I know like in some of the subdivision, they have undeveloped lots. Would that be included in that? I mean, there's, these are the way they were for the last 100 years. They're not ever been developed or, or done anything.
But they're in the city limits.
They are in the city limits, but they're all, you know, it's never, nothing's ever been done.
They're just wooded lots.
Wooded lots.
And it's taxed differently that way.
I, mine's not, I can tell you that.
So, when it came into the city, it was required by state statute and Missouri Constitution to be rezoned. So, when it was rezoned, that's the use that it should have as it came into the city. So, if it came as a residential use, for example, if it's a wooded lot, that wouldn't be an agricultural lot per se. But it, if it was what it was in the county and it came to the city and it was never rezoned, then it's whatever the zoning was when it was in the county before. And it's really a case-by-case kind of decision, or case-by-case on how you determine what its prior zoning is, and then what it's on now and what its actual use could be. It could be illegal, non-conforming. There's a whole bunch of different ways.
So, my question is, on those wooded lots, do they have to go in and cut the grass and sow weeds down in the woods?
I, well, it would be, what is the current zoning use?
I don't know what the current zoning is.
Right. That would be, if it was an R3, then, you know-
Like in my, my subdivision. You have, we have lots coming into my subdivision, there's three or four of them there that are-
Have never been, have been, have never been-
Nothing's ever been done.
-excavated on.
The goal of this is not to make everybody clear all the underbrush off of a wooded lot where they, like your subdivision, for example, up around your house, you've got manicured, but you may have some down over the hillside that's still sort of wild. The goal of this is some of the houses that are small residential lots that just happen to be in the agricultural zoning district, that when we make contact with the residents to mow the grass because it's two foot tall in the front yard, they cite the loophole that it's in the agricultural zoning district, therefore it can be above 12 inches.
When they do that, do they, do they mow it and bale hay on it? I know there's some residents, I know that do that in town.
A lot of that, where that's being done are in legal non-conforming uses, where they've always been baling hay, not necessarily in the agricultural zoning districts. And like I said, you really have to look at the history of the property and look at the specific zoning and see how it fits in. I mean, we're not a proactive, if you will, department where they go out and look for complaints. They spend plenty of time just responding to complaints. If there's a particular lot you have, Alderman Clark or the board or the public has that wants us to look at whether or not they're, they should be allowing overgrowth or not, we can absolutely do that.
Okay. Because I know there's some lots down on South, South 47 that are agriculture and that-
Well, they're legal non-conforming lots.
But they, but every year they mow it and bale hay.
Right. Basically, what happens is if-
Are we talking those would have to be cut all the time, then?
No. Those lots, I think you're talking about like kind of by St. Andrews Place, is that what you're talking about?
That'd be one area.
That'd be one area. Basically, like St. Andrews Place, for example, they provided us sufficient information via affidavit that prior to that, the enactment of the zoning code in 1982, that it was being mowed and cut for hay. So, it was considered a legal non-conforming use under our code. So, I mean, it kind of, like I said, it's, it's like really fact-intensive on that particular lot and what the use is. Like St. Andrews Place, one is a good example where there was a question that was brought up, we looked into it. When we looked into it, they gave us information back saying, hey, this has always been done this way. Then they provided information from the current landowners, prior property landowners, and someone else, maybe somebody that cut the hay. And then the building commissioner at that time made a decision that it was a legal non-conforming use and that as long as they continued that, and they didn't stop using it in that manner, that it would continue to be allowed to be operated in that manner.
Okay.
So, it's like really specific for each property because it's, you know, different for each one.
And I believe the key is that it, as it states, it is an allowed agricultural use. If you're physically baling the hay and selling it or feeding it to your animals and that, that's different than just deciding not to mow the yard.
I just wanted to make sure with, because reading it, I can read it one way and, and really it means something else. So, I was wanting to make sure that it didn't cover those, those wooded lots or, or the ones that-
It's not intended to change any of the current uses as they exist now. It's just really to clarify, we have some lots that are strictly residential lots that may be in an ag zoning where the residential lot is allowed, but it really has no agricultural use whatsoever, so we can make sure that they keep it under 12 inches.
Okay.
It doesn't have an application to any, because I don't believe your subdivision's in the ag district, is it?
No, I think we're-
Yeah, so it wouldn't even apply, it wouldn't even change any part of that.
But I was just trying to use it as an example.
Sure. Yeah, it wouldn't affect any of those, the legal non-conforming such as South 47 or any lots in the Isaac Kent. I mean, it really just talks about the agricultural reserve district that it really affects.
Because we have, in Isaac Kent, we, well, it's, wouldn't be that, but we have one resident that, back behind him, he has several acres that are in the city limits that looks more like prairie. And I don't know if-
That doesn't affect that at all. Like I said, it's really, the clarification is really for the ag, agricultural reserve zoning district. Would you agree with that, Jack? That's really what our clarification is in there for, not for any of the other zoning districts. It's the same for the way it was before.
So, this we'll discuss in a build ordinance. So, there's nothing we need to do now, right?
Correct.
Dress that, dress that in item number 17 on the agenda. Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome, sir.
Chief Hottishell?
Good evening, sir. Board members. So, last week, we had a little event where we had a virus slip through our buyer's software at a desktop.